I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of August 20th, 2015 to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson.
Here. Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Fanti.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Meritato.
Here.
Trustee Pogec. Excused. Trustee Schroeder. Excused. Would you all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Schmidt, would you like to start us off, please?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights remembers Patriot Day on Friday, September 11th, with a silent parade of first responder vehicles, followed by a candlelight service at 7:15 PM on the front steps of the Village Hall. Join Mayor Jackson, our Village Board of Trustees, police and fire personnel, neighbors and friends at the Village Hall for a moment of silence and reflection on Patriot Day. For more information, you may call the Mayor's office at (630) 909-5303. Come out to Camera Park, September 10th through the 20th, for Oktoberfest, sponsored by Schnitzel Plots and the Village of Glendale Heights. Enjoy authentic German food and drink, live bands, dancing, entertainers, and other family-friendly activities. Enter for a chance to win a trip to Germany, where you'll receive a special brewery tour. For more information, including hours, entertainment schedule, and admission fees, visit www.glandalehightsoctoberfest.com or call (323) 577-3893. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Fanti.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Clean out your basement, attic, and garage, and bring it all to the 11th Annual Community Garage Sale on Saturday, August 22nd, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Camera Park. If you have nothing to sell, then come out and shop for bargains from many different sellers. For registration information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. The Glendale Heights Historic House, located at 311 Windy Point Drive, will be open for tours on Saturday, September 12th, between 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM. Your nostalgia clock will be turned back to the way things were 100 years ago. As you see the working pump on the kitchen sink, wood-burning stove in the kitchen, oil-burning light fixtures, and the player piano in the front parlor. Read all about the history of Glendale Heights in the exhibit hall, where you will learn about the original settlers, from the 1830s to the incorporation of the Village of Glendale Heights in 1959. For more information on Historic House tours, please contact the Mayor's office at (630)
Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. Trustee Light.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights is excited to present the 33rd Annual Show and Shine Car Show and Swap Meet to be held at Camera Park on Fullerton Avenue on Sunday, September 13th, from 10:00 AM to 3:30 PM. There will be 20 classes of vehicles on display. The event will also include a swap meet, food, music, and touch truck for families and kids. If you're interested in registering a vehicle or signing up to be a swap meet vendor or crafter, please visit glendalehighs, www.glandalehighs.org/carshow to download a registration form. Join us for our final park party of 2015 year, where we will have some great family fun and the opportunity to meet the Mayor and myself. The final park party will be held on Tuesday, September 1st, from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM at Almond Park. Enjoy a picnic-style dinner as you play games and dance along with the Recreation Day Camp staff. Check out Glendale Heights Police Vehicles and Bloomingdale Fire Protection District Trucks. For more information, visit www.ghprf.com or call (630) 620-6060.
Thank you, Mike. Clerk Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Get your tickets today for the Kelly Miller Circus. The circus will be in town Friday, August 28th, through Monday, August 31st, at Camera Park. Come see the Raising of the Big Top on Friday, August 28th, at 9:00 AM, featuring a free guided tour and tiger meet and greet. Showtimes are Friday at 7:30 PM, Saturday and Sunday at 2:00 PM, 5:00 PM, and 8:00 PM, and Monday at 7:30 PM. Advance tickets are $12 for adults and $6 for children. If purchased between 9:00 AM and noon each circus morning, and can be purchased at the circus box office located at Camera Park. Tickets purchased at the gate are $16 for adults and $8 for children. For more information, please visit www.kellymillercircus.com. The Glendale Heights Police Department will host their 18th Annual Citizens Police Academy beginning Tuesday, September 1st. Enrollment is free and open to citizens 18 years of age and older who live or work in Glendale Heights. Applications for enrollment can be downloaded and printed from the Village website and are due no later than August 25th. For more information, contact the Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Meritato.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
GH2O Aquatics Center, last day of the season, is Monday, September 7th, and is currently only open on Saturdays and Sundays from noon to 7:00 PM. Come out before we close for the season and take a dip in the pool, hang ten-on-the-floor rider surfing simulator, and enjoy the exciting water slides and diving complex. For more information on the GH2O and the postseason hours, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. The next coffee with the Mayor and the Village Board is scheduled for Saturday, September 5th, from 10:00 AM to noon at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Mayor or Village Board, please call the Mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pat. Next, we have a presentation, short one, for our Finance Director, Bill Poling.
Thank you, Mayor. Most of us are familiar with credit scores and how they're influenced by either our good or bad habits. The same goes for the Village as related to its credit rating as assigned by Moody's Investor Services. As part of its due diligence process, Moody's undertakes what's known as surveillance, where it selects issuers and puts them under the credit microscope. After issuing bonds in 2010, Moody's completed an internal rerating of the Village and upgraded it to an AA2. Prior to that, the Village's credit rating was AA3. An AA2 rating is better than an AA3 rating. The Village went into the Moody's Rating Update Process with some expectations that it could be downgraded, especially given recent credit rating headlines for the state and in some of our surrounding communities. As a matter of fact, in a headline taken from a Moody's newsletter, article dated August 3rd, 2015, rating downgrades in the second quarter of 2015 exceeded upgrades in number and dollar value. There were 149 downgrades across all public finance sectors compared to only 107 upgrades. On July 10th, Moody's notified the Village that it was affirming its AA2 excellent credit rating status. Our financial advisor from Spear Financial said this was totally unprecedented, that a downgrade did not occur considering what's been going on in Illinois. The official Moody's report commended the Village on being able to protect its reserves in these difficult times by being physically responsible, with revenue management and expenditure controls, by reducing the overall Village labor force from 230 to 198, by the strategic use of reserves to leverage bond proceeds and grants towards planned capital expenditures, and by having a strong and stable elected official and executive staff team. Moody's defines AA issuers or issues as demonstrating very strong, very strong, credit-worthiness. Congratulations, Mayor Jackson, Village President. Congratulations to the entire Board of Trustees and the members of the executive staff on this well-deserved recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And thank you, staff, very much. Next, I see you're ready, Keith.
I'm ready.
It's all yours.
Just gotta wait my shot here, hold on. All right. Thank you, Mayor and Board, for this opportunity to give a brief aquatics update. This season at GH2O was a busy one. This year, we had over 1,569 passholders, 9,000 visitors to the, daily visitors to the pool, and a number of different events that took place throughout the season. At the GH2O, there are many things that go on during, throughout the season. The Dolphin Swim Team, swim lessons, surf club, flowrider lessons, private rentals, and many other things. The swim lessons this year saw many different levels, from little swimmers, the moms and minnows, all the way up to our junior lifeguards. And one of the great things about GH2O and the swim lesson program is that all of our participants in our summer day camp have an opportunity to go through those lessons as well. So, the little girl on the right making her way across the pool, that's one of the things you saw a lot of as you were watching the pool this summer, and always great to see the kids with those big smiles on their face. The Glendale Heights Dolphins also used GH2O as their home base, and this season, they had 104 swimmers on their team. They competed in 10 dual meets, two conference meets, and had a highly successful season. There are also a number of different rentals and private groups that joined, as well as many of the organizations that are through the Glendale Heights Sports Hub, including the baseball program and the soccer program having the after-hours party that everybody enjoys so greatly. But what really makes up the GH2O is our lifeguards. The lifeguards are certified by Starfish Aquatics, and we had 22 active rescues this year, most of them in the dive well. And active rescues were performed to assist struggling swimmers to make sure that they exit the pool safely. And so, one of the reasons why I did this is that I don't think that this group of people gets enough recognition, and I'm very pleased to be able to call, I think I have 17 here right now, so if I could have them all come up, I'd like to get them up in front of the board and take a picture and thank them for what was a great summer at GH2O. They wouldn't have been able to do that without you.
And I want to just, wanted to personally add that I've received a lot of kudos from residents, as well as elected officials. I certainly have been out there with you. The flowrider, those of you who know that flowrider and how to instruct four-year-olds to adults on how to surf is amazing. So, you got a lot of kudos from residents throughout the season, so great job.
All right, everybody's got to face this way so we can get some pictures.
Can we stand up behind them?
No, you're good. Bros, guys.
Thank you so much, because safety is the most important thing that we worry about, especially with children. You guys did an excellent job. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Next. Bruce Christian is here from, okay, I gotta read this right out of here, because I know it changed. Adventist Glennos Hospital, Ameda Health.
That's correct.
And I probably still said it wrong, huh?
No, you said it correct.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Jackson.
Do you have some updates for us, please?
Village Council, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you this evening. It's a real privilege to have the opportunity to continue to serve at our community hospital, to continue to provide the level of services, and to continue to make improvements, which we work on every day. But I wanted to give you a little bit of an update, a little bit of history, and a little bit of update of what has taken place in, at the hospital over, actually, the last year and a half is when it began. It was in June of 2014 that Adventist Midwest Health and Alexium Brothers began to have a discussion and signed the letter of intent to form a joint operating company. In October 31 of 2014, we actually signed a definitive agreement setting forth the parameters of the partnership, and approval was granted by the Illinois Health Facility Services Review Board for us to proceed. February 1 of this year, the joint operating company became official. And April 13 of this year, we announced the new name of the joint operating company. I might say that many questions have been asked by not only our employees, our medical staff, but many of our patients and people in our community. What is the joint operating company? It was not a purchase. The hospitals were not sold. Either one of the parties did not sell. It's not a merger. The corporate companies still own our respective assets. It is an affiliation, and what we have done is create a long-term partnership to provide an operating framework for the hospitals to ensure that we have a long-term future. It allows both organizations to integrate our operations while maintaining separate ownership of our assets and preserving the respective religious identities and mission priorities that each of us has. As partners, both organizations will continue to operate in their respective faiths, either Adventist or Catholic. If you look at the map, this gives you a view of the number of ZIP codes that we currently serve with the new operating company. A grand total of 139 ZIP codes is what we're currently servicing in our primary and our secondary service area. Why did we do this? Healthcare reform, as many of you read about in the paper and you hear about frequently from various news medias, has required that we basically transform the delivery and how we do business. Population management is upon us. Clinical integration and our commitment to prevention is at the forefront of what we do every day. And this transformation means that we need scale. Market essentiality and physician integration and ambulatory networks are absolutely, will be mandatory in the very near future. Ameda Health brings together all of these pieces in a contiguous geography. We will align our strategies, as well as our best practices, operations to function as one completely aligned Ameda Health system. Our alignment will be greatly facilitated by the fact that we are two excellent faith-based organizations with remarkably similar cultures. We also share an unwavering commitment to a common vision of mission and values. As Ameda Health, we have unprecedented opportunity to achieve our vision for the metropolitan Chicago region for which we serve, and that vision is to be the premier provider of faith-based, community-oriented, clinically-integrated healthcare across the metropolitan region. Ameda Health has also the potential to become a force for transforming healthcare in the communities we serve, for expanding our mission across the metropolitan region. And that mission is to provide healthcare that is accessible, that is inclusive, that is consumer-oriented, responsive, and holistic. Consistent with our Ameda Health mission, we will strive to provide healthcare that is characterized by superior consumer experiences, outcomes, quality, physician and staff, services, and technology. Our name was inspired by these words: friendship in Italian, truth honest in Hebrew, spiritual light boundless in Hindi, reflecting the core values of truth, friendship, and mutual respect for all of our faith-based call to healing. And we are proud to be Ameda Health. Ameda Health Adventist Medical Center Glen Oaks is licensed for 146 beds. We admit approximately 5,000 people per year. Our outpatient visits are in excess of 15,000, and we employ 651 employees. As many of you know, we have gone through a significant transformation in the last two and a half years. The first phase of our renovation included transforming all of our private medical surgical rooms from semi-private to private. We built a brand-new chapel and relocated it to the hospital's main entrance. We completely remodeled our lobby. Patient visitor corridor, family lounge areas are completely updated. We built the Lagatuta Center for Health, which focuses and houses oncology, ambulatory care, our wound care center, and our hyperbaric medicine. One of the things that we are extremely proud of is our Glen Oaks Hospital Foundation. Discover what our new capital campaign continues to be a tremendous asset and a success for our organization. This past year, we raised in excess of $1 million, and we were achieved that goal before the deadline of which we had set for ourselves. Ameda Health Adventist Medical Center is proud to participate in the following community activities: the Glendale Heights Family Health and Safety Fair, the Glen Side Public Library Events, the Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic Event, Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens, the monthly wellness presentations, Family and Faith Christian Church Food Pantry, Flew Shot Clinic, Glendale Heights Christmas Sharing Program, and much more. And from my personal perspective and on behalf of every one of our employees and our medical staff, we are grateful for the opportunity to serve this, our community. This is a, just a picture of our new website that has just been put up on the Internet, of which we're very pleased with. This is Ameda Health Adventist Medical Center Glen Oaks. As President and CEO, I am proud to be part of the organization and to have a small opportunity to make a difference in this, our community. I would be pleased to entertain any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Board?
Just happy, glad. Happy for you.
Thank you very much.
Very happy for you. Thank you for being part of our community and...
Thank you.
You save a lot of lives. Been there. Appreciate it.
Me too.
And Bruce, I know I've said this before to you, but I want to make sure that you know the residents do contact the Village to talk about your staff and how you're customer-friendly, get them to where they need to go. I always say that when you walk in the building, somebody helps you, and you know, they're supposed to be on another job and they help you get to where you need to go. But also, your emergency room and how quickly people get into the emergency, their own private area. I've heard a lot of kudos from the residents, so we're very pleased with the changes.
Let me just say that we are finishing up in the next three weeks our strategic business plan for the next five to 10 years. And without disclosing anything, because it has not gone to our Board for approval yet, the best is yet to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for being so involved in our community, because it's a very important part of our success, is all the help and assistance you give our residents and our Village. Thank you. Next, I would like us to break for cake for our lifeguards that have worked so very hard all summer long. And a little bit farther to go, please. This meeting is now recessed. I'd like to call this Village Board meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this Board on an agenda item, please step forward.
Have a blast.
Sorry, that's committee of the whole. That's after. You, being nun, we will move on to the consent agenda. Trustee Fanti.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Fanti.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business. New business number one would be a motion to waive first reading on new business item number six. Trustee Schmidt.
I move we waive first reading on new business item number six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First reading is waived on new business number six. Number two is an ordinance to amend Chapter 11 entitled Appearance Code of Title 10 entitled Building Regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, and that is the elimination of the Appearance Commission. This is first reading. Number three, an ordinance to amend Article A entitled Licensing and Inspection of Single-Family Rental Properties, and Article B entitled Licensing and Inspection of Multi-Family Dwellings, of Chapter 14 entitled Licensing and Inspection of Multiple Family Dwellings. I think I repeated that twice, because this is very bad. Of Chapter 14 entitled Licensing and Inspection of Properties, of Title 10 entitled Building Regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, Licensing Regulations, and that is first reading. I can tell attorneys wrote this. Number four, an ordinance to amend Chapter 3 entitled Residential Code of Title 10 entitled Building Regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, and that's Replacement Door and Window Dimension Requirements, and that is first reading. Number five is an ordinance authorizing the purchase by the Village of Glendale Heights of one replacement vehicle for the Village's Public Works Department. That is first reading. And number six, first reading has been waived, and that is an ordinance approving and authorizing the purchase of real property commonly known as 538 M1/2 North Avenue, Glendale Heights, Illinois, and this would be ordinance 2015-49. Trustee Fanti.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Fanti.
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-49 is approved. Number seven is a motion to reject the proposals received... Number seven is a motion to reject the proposals received for the purchase of a storage area network, SAN, and file servers and authorize the public rebid of equipment. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Fante?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion is approved. We now go back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being nun, a motion would be in order to go into executive session to discuss land acquisition. What were my other two?
Collective bargaining.
Collective bargaining. Class of benefits for one or more group of employees. So a motion to go into executive session to discuss these three issues would be in order. Trustee Fante.
A motion to go into executive session to discuss land acquisitions, collective bargaining, and class of benefits for one or more employees.
Second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Fante?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
We will be going to executive session and will be back shortly. No action was taken in executive session. Next up would be a motion to adjourn. Trustee Fante.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Village Board meeting is adjourned.
Like to call a committee whole meeting of August 20, 2015, at 9 o'clock. Marie, you know if she's present?
Noted.
Is there any add-ons or deletions? Okay, being nun, remove the public comment. Do we have anybody with a public comment? Can you go to the podium, state your name and your address? Now, excuse me, are you going to be the only one speaking?
I'm the only one speaking.
Okay.
My name's Richard Berg. I'm the staff representative for the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 3768, which represents workers for the Village of Glendale Heights.
Okay, you may proceed.
Okay, thank... Well, first, you know, I'm glad to be here. You know, I'm Mayor Jackson and trustees of the village board. You know, a certain buzz or words got back to me about what people thought, why would a staff rep want to speak to the village board? But the truth is, I think I probably should have been here much sooner. I think it's important for us to have an open line of communications and for the organization of the workers here to be in a good communication with the leadership of the village that they work for. I know I was talking to Raquel Becerra today, and she said that she likes to give kudos to workers that work for the village and when they do good things or when she runs into them. And I'm going to hopefully take a page from her and give some kudos to our members who are people that work for the Village of Glendale Heights. Some of the kinds of work that our members do is community service officers, police dispatchers, office technicians, police clericals, secretaries, salon and senior center workers, sports hub workers, code enforcement officers, things like that. And it's often not things that people think of when they think of a union, quite frankly. These jobs often involve a fair amount of sacrifice for the citizens of this village. Often, many of our workers are asked to work holidays, or some of the jobs are 24/7. When you work on a Christmas or Christmas Eve and you miss and you're away from your children, that's something you never get back. And it's something that these members have given to the Village of Glendale Heights. Often, when there's an emergency, the first response is one of our members trying to deal with that. We also deal with important revenue things such as parking tickets, water bills, licenses, the people that were honored from the pool in the sports hub. Our members are active and are working there. The senior center I've mentioned. And so we do, we keep records, you know, order supplies, do payroll, things like that. Our union and this village, like local municipalities across the country, faced major challenges in 2008 when the financial crisis hit. And it was a difficult time for this village as it was for citizens across the country. And we worked together. Our union and the village worked together to get through those times. The union cooperated with the village, and we got through that. But it's, here we are now, seven years later, and there's, you know, some of, the crisis, it's been a continuing crisis. This is what I hear from our members. And the stress on the membership and on the village, I think, is strong. And it's something that I think we need to talk about and try to deal with. It seems that we're understaffed in a lot of places. Part-timers who don't get health insurance, sick time, or don't get pension credits are too much of the village workforce right now. That creates more turnover, and often our members are spending lots of time training people as opposed to doing the job. What we want to do, you know, we're committed to making this village work. We think we need a secure future for the Village of Glendale Heights, but we need a secure future for the union members that work for the Village of Glendale Heights as well. So thank you for listening for me. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Damn, get the duct tape quick. I'm really worried. Go ahead, Pat. Okay, we'll go number B, committee recommendations. Number one, plant commission. A recommendation to approve an application for conditional use for an automobile detail shop at 2017 Bloomingdale Road in the Glendale Heights Auto Car Center. Motion? Trustee Fante?
I'll move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Discussion. Sharon?
Do we, has there been a auto detail shop there before?
Yes, there had previously been...
Like just changing owners or?
What has happened, the previous auto detail shop had left, and the property owner is trying to market the site, and people that are looking at it want to move in quickly. So they don't currently have a tenant, but they're wanting to go through the conditional use process as the owner, so then they can move someone in right away.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne.
Anyone else? Being nun, I need a, you've got a motion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Being nun, we'll move it to the board. Discussion regarding electric aggregation update. Would that you be, Holly?
Yes, please. I wanted to provide you an update regarding our municipal electric aggregation. As you recall, in 2012, we did approve a referendum which allowed us to do a municipal-wide electric aggregation. It was very successful, and I think when we were done, even with the market and some different things, we were able to save over $1 million back into our community on the reduction of electrical rates. January, our contract with First Energy expired, and due to weather conditions and various situations of the electric market, which is volatile, went up. And we couldn't obtain any further savings to make it to our advantage. We have since then, in two occasions, gone out to recheck the market to see if it's been advantageous for us to go back to a community-wide electric aggregation program. We again today received bids through the Northern Illinois Municipal Electric Consortium who assisted us on those bids. And today, those bids were still not favorable for us to go ahead and reestablish that electric cooperative with our community. To give you an idea, today's, I took my own electric bill, which is the same electric cost as what all the residents in town. And my electric rate is .0664 per kilowatt hour. The bids received today for the first year or a combination of programs were higher than that. Due to some regulatory changes, we're anticipating rates generally to drop next year. And even the consultant, Mr. Hoover, believed that those rates would be equal to, under the bid situation, what our community residents would be. So at this point, we are still staying off the program. We're going to leave the residents with ConEd and with the electrical through their program, and we'll continue to monitor that. And if the electric market appears that, again, it's advantageous, it's a very small cost for us to recheck bids, and we'll do that to see if an opportunity comes up for us to be able to bring those savings back to the community.
Any questions?
That's great.
Good job, Holly. Okay, number two, merchant car service recommendation. Would that be you, Roger?
Holly.
Go ahead.
The merchant car services, just so everybody knows, it's the company that actually processes our debit and credit card payments. Those are fees that are different from what Visa fees pay. So we've gone out for an RFP. We're making a recommendation for the merchant provider, which is ETS Electronic Transaction Systems Corporation. Though, you know, to give a flavor, when we look at our overall fees for credit cards, they could range from $60,000 to $100,000 a year, but the merchant card provider is a small percentage of those fees. It's only $7,000. So if anyone comes in with a Visa or a Discover card, if one, all the merchant providers will all charge the same Visa fee. That's called an interchange rate, but their fees differ for processing and doing the deposits and working with the Visa, Discover, and so forth. So this is for handling of those processes and providing the statements and working for us to receive our payments and so forth. And just to give a flavor, I put it within the memo. I think last year, we did 45,000 transactions, and I think it ranged up to, and I just highlighted it here and I just lost it, over $4.3 million worth of transactions using debit and credit cards. And we are seeing that grow because of convenience and other factors. So it is a large portion of our payment processing as we go to electronic and just counter coverage. So that would be the recommendation to ETS, and we're looking for motion to concur to go to the board.
Okay. We do take our credit cards, right?
The only credit card we don't take in some instances is American Express.
I was just about to say that, because their fee...
Their fee is very substantial.
Yeah, very high.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yeah. Looking for direction? Go for it. I guess. You want direction, or do we need to move this to the board?
We'll need to go to the board with a recommendation to concur.
That's what I thought. Okay, I need a motion. Mayor? Move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll move it to the board. Propose amendment to the plumbing code. I know this can't be you, Holly.
No, it's Joanne. My turn. The State of Illinois Department of Public Health required, mandated that all municipalities adopt and follow the 2014 plumbing code. So that is done. We did not adopt an ordinance that just is required by state law. In the meantime, the Department, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, as part of our agreement to have Lake Michigan water, they are requiring that we adopt certain restrictions for watering, you know, the water restrictions, water conservation, sorry, water conservation requirements, as well as mending our plumbing code to only allow fixture replacements with water sense fixtures. So while the State of Illinois is saying, here, you have to follow this code and you can't amend it, IDNR is saying you have to amend the code. So we, Mr. Starino's office has been working with the State of Illinois. We are allowed to amend this code if we get permission from the State of Illinois. So we've prepared the ordinance, and then we'll be sending it to the State of Illinois for approval. So this will address our ability to get Lake Michigan water with the water conservation measures and satisfy the State of Illinois. It's kind of a little complicated.
Because you lost me a long time ago.
Okay.
I mean, I water pipes now. I mean, everything is fine now, right? I mean...
Yes, but DuPage Water Commission wants us to make sure that we're requiring our residents to conserve water as best they can. So the lower-flow toilets, the restrictions on when we can water our lawns. So they want us to reduce the, or to minimize the excessive use of water. So that's what the IDNR is requiring. So in order to do that, we need to amend the State of Illinois Plumbing Code, which only they can grant permission. So we need the board to amend the code and the State of Illinois to allow us to amend the code.
So like, are we going to go on even odd days to water and stuff like that?
No, we don't have to change, that's all already in place. So, no, we don't need to do any of that. We are fine. We can't, you can't just let the hose run and run and run. You have to have a shut-off on it. So that's not changing. The only thing that's changing is the, that any fixtures that are replaced are labeled water sense. So that's, so we don't have the large water use that we had. Some of the old appliances had excessive water discharge.
Okay.
Trustee Fante, I looked at the, I looked at the code, and the good news is during the Green Team efforts and through the years, we have already been ahead of the game with a lot of the requirements. So this is like the last, water sense labeling is the last thing in place, so all the other code requirements we're already doing, which is good news.
What's up with the State of Illinois? I mean, they should be worried about getting a budget.
The good news is we're not the only community that has to do this. Anyone in the Water Commission has to comply. Is that a good way to not answer that question?
That's good.
Well done.
Yeah, I really agree with what you just said. But I want you to know that they did have time to make pumpkin pie the state pie. Jesus.
What happened to apple?
Pumpkin is now your state pie.
Okay.
We don't have a state budget, and we can't get our money from the state, but I want you to know that we do have a new state pie.
Okay, is there any other?
No.
Okay, being nun, I need a motion to adjourn. Trustee Fante?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this meeting is over.